I would like for the board to remember our charge is that we are here to protect the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens of Scotland County, no matter how hard it may be sometimes. We do not have any minutes from the last meeting, so we will postpone the approval of those minutes until our next meeting. And I'll try to remember to remind Rook to get them off the printer in time next time. Our first item on the agenda is special use rezoning application for Nikki Willis. I have some questions about that. This is for rezoning for a property in Aurora Hill on Peels Chapel Road to build a duplex. I have some questions about it because it says something about cluster housing, but when I look through all the ordinances, there's not a definition for cluster housing in there anywhere. And I haven't had an opportunity to go back through the state statutes and see if they've got a definition. But if you look under residential uses, it's permitted in an R2 for a duplex. So why aren't we doing R1? Is it?
The R1 is for one roof.
Okay.
It can be up under one roof, the two houses. You remember the quadplex that we did? It's one roof, multiple living up under, so it's single-family. It's multifamily, so it would be R1. R2 would be like an apartment complex.
What we have there then is another item that we need to get firmly defined in the ordinances because there is some question about that. If you can make a note and get it to me, we'll work on that.
That's the same one that we did with the quad?
Yeah. And for some reason, none of us happened to realize, looking at what's noted here as residential uses, cluster housing, special use permit for R1, R2, residential dwelling, special use for R1, R2. I didn't know there was a special use permits.
If they want to make it a, if they're going to put a duplex and they're like the only one there, then it has to have a special use. If it's not in the, is it in the area for it? This Willis?
There's single-family houses adjacent to it on both sides of the road.
And so the people who have a duplex will have two families under one roof. So that's why we put it in R1 for multifamily.
Multifamily, including structures with three or more units. And that's your name, but you're here. That's where I think there might be some question. You know, I'm looking through this. And this is back on what Jean did. I don't think that we questioned some of this stuff enough. We assume that she left everything exactly like it's supposed to be. Yep, this is. Oh, the applicant is not here, so we can't address this tonight. Is there anyone here representing Nikki Willis?
Moving on.
Do I have a motion to table this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Jim to table this and from John to second it. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Do they have to be here?
Yep.
Yeah. We have taken a vote, book. We've taken a vote to table this until you have a chance to get in contact with the applicant. Jim made the motion and John seconded it. All right, so that brings us to our second item of business, which is an application for a special use permit for a family cemetery. The applicant is Betty Breeden. Amy is here on Betty's behalf. I'm sure she'd been here, she could have gotten here.
It's hard, yeah.
I got, since I did some surveying and reference this project, I want to exclude myself from any vote because of conflict of interest. If you have any questions about the survey or stuff that I can help you with.
In point of, whatever I want here. With only three voting members, we can't address this, can we?
What, you have four?
Oh, yes, we have four, thank you. Yes, we have four, thank you.
Until she showed up, I was like, oh.
All right. Do we have to, John just withdraw and we just note that?
Well, I think you can vote all I can do that.
That's what I was going to do. All right, John has requested to be recused from the vote on this item since he has personal involvement. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Right, you are recused.
Thank you.
But you're not recused from discussion. Couple of items on this, just for everybody's note. The cemetery has already had a burial there. We had a circumstance in which we were not able to, as we had one time before, to have a meeting as the death of the person was very close to the time that they reached out to burial and there's not enough time for the special use application to be processed. Be honest, and Amy, this is weird. You guys are in violation. But it's done and we have no process to say, we're going to fine you $100 a day for however many days.
But that's why we paid the double fee, correct?
I don't know.
Because it was done, because we filed the permit after the fact and we paid $600 instead of the 300.
All right, I'll, if that's what the zoning office agreed on, right? And having had that happen, that's prompting something that we're going to try to address tonight is to put in place a waiver for circumstance like this. So the zoning office will have something in writing that allows them to take care of that. But having said that, the applicant is here, represented. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak for the applicant or to have word?
I do.
Yeah.
To give a little context, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow members. My name's Jim Blackwell. For the record, I live at 12860 McCollman Road in Gibson. I'm here to speak in favor of the special use permit for the Breeden Family Cemetery in Gibson background on the events. It was tragically a rapid demise and death of our dear friend David Breeden and the confusion and drama that had been created with the granting of his last request of being buried on his property. This has created a timing issue, as the chairman has spoken to, with a special permit could not be obtained before the burial. Family representatives contacted county commissioners to explain the situation and not one commissioner contacted had a problem with moving forward the burial site as long as it met state and county law. Several county commissioners and zoning board members attended the visitation and funeral without voicing any concerns regarding the cemetery. Most told Mrs. Breeden, if there's anything I can do, please don't hesitate to call me. The family contacted professionals to ensure that the site met the requirements, although it was not possible to get the site surveyed or the fence constructed prior to the burial, but all other requirements were met. The fence now has been constructed and the site surveyed. Shortly following the burial, the family came to the zoning office and applied for the zoning and the special use permit. Will it be paid a $600 penalty for the late application? Unfortunately, this cemetery has been characterized in the community as a rogue site and the family was trying to get away with something which is absolutely false. This is a simple circumstance of poor timing, but nobody controls the time of their death. This afternoon, I leave you with one question. If this was your daddy and this was your family, what would you have done differently than the Breeden family did? This is a time in which government should exercise understanding, compassion, and common sense. I respectfully request that generous portions of each one of these attributes be applied tonight in these proceedings and approve the recommendation for the county commissioners to approve the special permit for the Breeden Family Cemetery. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Jim. We do have precedent for this situation in which there was a death in a family and there was an application made for a family cemetery. The applicant in that situation chose and came to the zoning board and at that time the applicant did make accommodations with the funeral home for the remains of the deceased to be kept at the funeral home until such time as the application had been processed. And we know that was an inconvenience and I think the board would have, would have preferred to see that done in this situation as well. And that's just saying that we have had to have them for. But the county commissioners, at least one county commissioner was made well aware of our family cemetery ordinances. And the family cemetery ordinances, I'm not going to get into that. All right, is any further discussion? John, would you tell us if what you have surveyed meets the requirements of the cemetery, family cemetery?
Does anybody want a larger copy? Okay, I guess a hard copy if you want. Basically, since the ordinances moved and we're all still grasping to these unique changes that were provided to us in these ordinances, I feel like this here meets the cemetery requirements for a family. I have actually located the fencing and the actual burial site, which I don't have listed on here, but it's on the left, third one up from the bottom. Based on that ordinance, I feel like what I've shown here meets all the criteria to be approved for a family cemetery.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review the family cemetery ordinances? There are specific designations for the distance from the cemetery, from a water source, from residence, from property lines. John has tested that those measurements have been met and...
Let me clarify one thing. The cemetery, to make the fencing and the burial site, does cross a property line, but it's a common property line with the same owner. So they, Betty owns both tracks. So in this plat here, we show where we're basically cutting this little triangle of the front track and be added to the cemetery. It's called like a recombination essentially. It does not cross any other property lines that's owned by other people.
I guess that's legal?
Yeah, oh yeah, we do recombination all the time. And since she's the same owner of both tracks.
Right.
She can, we can do this as a recombination.
So as long as they don't sell that track?
Oh, they still sell it. Once this is done, the map will be recorded. And this is something we talked about with the county because I believe in the verbiage she had, it was something about being registered, cemetery being registered. What exactly does that involve? And is there any recording? Just recording of the plat or recording of a deed?
That's what the state cemetery commission.
Well, I think you may have to register it with some state, but you definitely have to record your map.
Yeah, definitely. But beyond that, is there, is there any other process? That's something I want to bring out in the cemetery ordinance that we might want to clarify.
Well, yeah, we're going to.
Okay, okay.
Sure are.
All right. And I'd say keep in mind, this ordinance moved all of us and we're kind of figuring it out as we go.
And Amy, it may benefit Betty and the rest of the family to have an official recombination of those two lots together.
Do you do that, John?
When you say recombine two lots, you mean in these...
There are separate, there are separate tax records, separate deeds. And it's like Judy and I, when we had our eight acres and we took the rest, we did a recombination with eight acres and part of farm to 24 acres into a single record.
I don't see the purpose in doing that for this because this...
I'm just thinking to keep any questions in the future out.
No requirement.
Say for instance, if something comes up in the house and the stationer's holding, that property line may be an issue.
It won't be anytime in the near future.
When it's conveyed and the attorney does a title search and all, this should pop up. Not only that, if it is surveyed again by another surveyor, we're by law required to locate any burial sites or what would be a cemetery and show on our plat. This should show up unless there's another document that might be filed later. I don't know, that's something we need to discuss later on. I don't see where she needs to combine her two tracks together.
Okay.
Now, she'll have to more essentially, this little triangle piece will have to be, depending on how attorney wants to prepare, what parent meets and bounds describe it. But then this map is showing it to be combined with the actual cemetery parcel.
It's kind of subject to almost an easement for that portion of the cemetery that's across the line there.
What's that now?
If it were sold separately, the front piece.
Yep.
It's almost as if you have an easement for that small triangle that's actually across the line.
Yeah, it'll be accepted out of description and has a tip, and it has a tip for access easement from 511.
So all the technical aspects have been met. And the penalty has been paid. Is any more discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
What we approve? To recommend it to the commissioners?
Yes. Recommend the commissioners to approve the special use for the family cemetery.
You've got to make that known in the motion.
Pardon?
I said you got to make that known in the motion.
My ears are ringing.
I said you have to make that known in the motion.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, so we'll know.
I move we approve the special use application for 519-24 for Betty Breeden.
I second that.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion approved. Passed. Thank you. Thank you. Y'all have a blessed night. Randy, before you get started, the other business is directly related to the family cemetery stuff. We may want to postpone that because I think, Randy, your program's going to take how long?
I'm going to try to condense it a little bit, just kind of go through it a little faster, probably about 30 minutes.
Okay, well, if we have time at the end, we'll discuss a little bit. But the discussion that I've asked for in other business is directly related to family cemeteries and some definitions.
We got to do some.
And maybe some differences between the state statutes and the Scotland County ordinances. So we'll discuss that after Randy finishes. All yours.
Thank you. And I, so the zone ordinance that you're operating under right now is the one that Jean prepared.
Long shot.
We're in touch with the PMS. Be insane.
The answer is no. She's done. It's a pile. And I went and told her I loved her graduation and was like, I'm... She's in the bed club this morning. I'm going to get that. Oh, that's Mark.
Now transmit the signal from the screen there.
I'm in a club, but I never made that far, son.
Since they have some technical issues, let me ask you, since the, I mean, I'm all for, you know, the family cemetery and everything and want people to be able to do what they need to do. So how was it they were able to, you know, do the burial and then like the previous family had it?
They did it violation, yeah.
The family knew the rules and they purposely ignored the rules.
I, I'm, I'm, we have to, because it's like, it's starting to be like, people are really doing, people are doing what they want to do without repercussions, like the guy with 7, on Highway 74 with the trailers.
You see the ones I want to talk about?
It's like, yeah. Because it's like, we have to put something in place, you know, when people, people got to know that, hey, yeah, we're with you, we want you to do things, but we want you to do it right.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And so if you have time, and I understand, you know, nobody knows the timing of their death, but if you knew you wanted to have a family cemetery, you know, try to make preparations. But people are just doing stuff and it's like, no repercussions. It's like, oh well, they're just going to approve it and we're going to go on about our business.
And I, you know, to be honest, I understand why they did what they did. I don't know if the funeral home offered them a refund or two. But there was a county commissioner that called me and he had a copy of the family cemetery ordinances. I sent it to him and I actually spoke with a member of the family and expressed to them what their ordinance was.
But holding the body is not, nothing not reasonable, really. That's not...
I understand that. I totally understand that because it's going to decay. It's going to do all that, but I'm just saying, we got to, we have to put something in place because...
The family wants closure.
Right, we set precedent.
Yeah.
We set precedent. If we did it for this person and then we come back and don't do it for somebody else, then they can refer back to this case study and say, well, you did this for this individual, so why not you're going to do it for us? And so that puts us in a pickle.
That's why we need to do is figure some other way out. Yeah, we'll round it.
We probably said more than we should have on Big Life.
There ought to be a way around. We can figure out that way around. Hold it up.
Maybe the wifi is just...
I used to know when it was so, we were telling you, telling you this too. Have confidential communication. I'll have, maybe do that a full year. You could have. An inch or two.
I'll just do it that way. That's complicated, we'll just stick with this. I'll stop the chair back here. All righty, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here this evening despite the weather. I just, we're here meeting this evening regarding the comprehensive plan survey results. So I've developed a presentation for you all just to review the survey results and then also talk a little bit about next steps, just to go ahead and close this part of the comprehensive plan out. So if you remember from our last meeting, public survey is a very important part of the comprehensive plan because we want to kind of understand where the community's at and what their priorities are. So this is supposed to be a presentation, but I hope it works with y'all, that it looks like that, sorry. So just the meeting agenda, we're going to review some general demographic data, we're going to review the respondent overview results, then we're going to talk about the actual comprehensive plan results. We'll talk about the common themes and then we'll discuss potential goals and action steps. In our next meeting in June, we'll develop a SWOT analysis, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And then we'll develop some goals and action steps. So we'll get into that, the latter part of the presentation, and then just if you have any questions. So general demographics, these are the slides that I'm just going to kind of scoot through. These are some general demographics for Scotland County, just to give us a baseline of where the county's at when it comes to education, unemployment, and income. The total housing units vacant is an interesting slide that I just want to call attention to now because it will apply later. So according to the U.S. Census Bureau data, 10.3% of the total housing units are vacant, which is 1,478 out of 14,000 are vacant, the rest are not vacant.
What year is that census data from?
That's the 2020, oh no, that's 2021 ACS estimates. Yeah, so this number is indicative of a lower available housing options for people. So if you're looking to move into Scotland County, this just means that your pool of houses you can select from is pretty limited. And then one of the things I'm going to propose a little later on in the, in the presentation is to perform a housing inventory assessment. is to perform a housing inventory assessment, just to kind of better understand the age and quality of that housing.
Yeah, I'm supposed to ask like, what?
Yes, so of the fourteen hundred, are those houses from the nineteen thirties? Are they, what kinds of houses are those, where are they located, the quality? Um, so we'll talk about that a little later on. Um, but just, this is kind of the general information of who the respondents were. So a large percentage answered that they live in Scotland County and then a small percent of, a small percentage answered that they owned a business here. Um, age, the largest population of respondents, uh, were ages thirty-six to fifty years old. We only had three respondents who were eighteen to twenty-four. Um, that's my generation that I. And then, um, oh, and just to let you know too, we had two hundred and seventeen responses in total, which is good. Um, I think Robinson County had three hundred and some, and obviously their population is much larger. So comparably, it's, it's a decent amount of responses, especially for the amount of time the survey was out. I know that you all noted that there was an issue with question seven, we had to rank it. Um, I know that one was kind of weird, some people did answer it finally and others didn't, um, but we'll go through that as well.
Or is some of that wasn't counted because of the website?
No, there were no issues with the website or like the QR code. The only issue was the ranking. People just didn't want to go through and rank it required it.
I posted on Facebook and I got hit by the Facebook police.
Oh, yes, so the Facebook algorithm, apparently right in the middle of our comprehensive plan, they had a new policy in place where anything related to government or like public administration, they're flagging. Um, and it's being, you know, like, uh, trying to persuade votes and things like that, even though our, our, um, survey had nothing to do with specific elected officials, for some reason it flagged it, so it was weird.
What about the three hundred and fourteen that we weren't able to count because they didn't go all the way to the end and get submitted or?
Oh, no, that's just people who probably scanned the code and then they just decided not to do it. Um, that starts, that's what that was called.
Oh.
Yeah, so some people, they may have been intrigued, let me just click this link, but then they were like, oh, never mind, I'm not going to do this. Um, which I've had a lot of before, people, people are not used to seeing QR codes, so they'll scan it just to have fun and do it and then they won't actually complete the survey.
It's a very important.
That started it, yeah. And only two hundred and, two hundred and two of them actually did it, so. I've, that's been a big problem in all the surveys I've done. So you'll see here, um, a large percent of the population lives in Laurinburg that answered the survey. This little purple piece right here is Maxton, um, and then Laurel Hill was the second largest. The other, we have a lot of people from Marston, which is in Richmond County. Um, we had some people who just lived here years ago and they moved. We had people who worked here, who, who worked here now, but don't live here.
Well, there's a good portion of Marston.
Oh, Mar, oh, yeah, okay, I didn't even know that, so that's why they did it. I would have listed that as an option. I thought Maxton was the only county or the only town that was partially in Scotland County. Um, and then the time in Scotland County, sixty-five point four percent of respondents have been here for over twenty years. Um, this data point will be kind of referenced throughout the presentation because a lot of times the people who are actually committed to completing a survey are going to be longtime residents of a location or a community. So it makes sense why. Um, and I was actually surprised that eleven point seven percent have been here for less than five years. So that's actually a really good number, um, for engagement. And then the pace of development in Scotland County, um, pretty much across the board, respondents noted that development in, in all of these areas is too slow, but most notably the industrial development, people referenced as being too slow at sixty-nine point three percent. Um, so I know you all have different projects coming up as far as industrial development goes and you're trying to work to attract new industrial partners. So just thinking about like tax incentives and different incentives for these big businesses, uh, that are interested in coming in, industrial, industrial businesses.
We already do that.
Yeah, tax incentives.
Yeah, I've known it for years.
Yes, that's great. Um, and then this is the ranking, this was the question that people had trouble with, but we still got good responses out of it, it was two hundred and two. Um, so you'll see here that majority of people ranked the, um, expanding employment opportunities and enhanced public safety as issues or things that they wanted to really call attention to in Scotland County. And then also expanding the supply of housing and making downtowns busier and vibrant. So what was ranked the most important by the most amount of people ranked first was enhanced public. You'll see this light green color is larger than any other section. Um, so that's another common theme that we'll address later in the presentation is public safety, crime, drugs. It's very important, something that a lot of people called attention to in their responses. Um, and then the second highest ranked first item was expanding employment opportunities. So any questions? Trying to scoot through, okay. Um, how, that should say, oh, why do you live in Scotland County? Sorry, I can't read. Sixty-seven percent of people said they live here because their family lives here. That's pretty common for rural areas, so in all the surveys I've done in rural communities, it's usually my family lives here. I've lived here for a long time. Um, it's just that kind of generational connection to the county. So we see that here and then it's a pretty large gap between family lives here to thirty-seven percent enjoying the pace of life. Um, but then you'll see inversely at the other end of the spectrum, twelve percent of people said sense of safety and education. Um, so that's basically people saying I, not the sense of safety and education, why I live here in Scotland County. So that's another concern that they've noted and they want to highlight, um, for you all in their results. So that is reflected in the top challenges for Scotland County, where eighty-one percent said crime rate and drugs and seventy-three percent said lack of qualified workforce. That lack of qualified workforce potentially stemming from lack of education, so it's kind of, there's a, a relationship there. Um, and then we also had high tax rate being another item that a lot of people noted, called attention to the public education system. Um, and then what was interesting to me is housing inventory was one of the least important challenges that people noted at only twenty-two percent in the corner here, um, even though, let's see, it's on the next one, it's further down. Some people noted that there weren't enough housing options, so. We see that based on the census data, there's only ten percent of vacant houses, there's only ten percent of houses that are vacant for people to move into. But the people who completed the survey don't see that as an issue. So I'm trying to figure out why, I think it's because the people who completed the survey have been here for a long time. So they already have a home, they're not trying to bring family to live here, that kind of thing. Um, but we see based on census data that there's not a lot of houses available, but the people who completed the survey don't see housing inventory as an issue. So that might be something for the planning board to consider, uh, looking into as far as attracting different housing developers, addressing the zoning regulations as far as cluster housing, as you all were referencing earlier. Um, just kind of better understand, better understanding housing ordinance in Scotland County. Moving on to the next one, top commercial activities. Um, people like to go to local businesses here in Scotland County based on their responses. So these were just the top most important, um, activities, commercial activities that people like to engage in. Moving on, what is your vision for the future of the county? Increased employment opportunities again, and then increased youth opportunity, those were the two most selected, uh, responses. And then increased educational attainment, so these are things that we're seeing across the board. Um, and also here expanded industrial and manufacturing presence, that also aligns with the earlier slide where people said the industrial development is too slow, so that's reflected again. Um, if you could change one thing about Scotland County and why, we had some interesting narrative responses. Some of them were left out, um, due to the contents of the, of the response. Um, but the litter is horrible, I would have a better education system, um, another education system comment. Um, minimal youth opportunities and the crime rate, more downtown businesses. A lot of people in those narrative responses, um, called attention to like the visual appeal throughout the county, just kind of looking rundown, a lot of abandoned buildings and things like that. So that could potentially be translated into, um, redevelopment, like, um, repurposing buildings for different uses, that kind of thing. And then if you could, this is another slide, continuation of that, less crime, more youth activities, make all counties and county employees live in the county. Taxes are, taxes, we're one of the highest paying counties in North Carolina, we talked about why that is. Reduce wasteful administrative jobs and county and school system, money should be spent in schools and reducing crime and drugs. So those were just a few of the narratives. Those were the narrative responses that I saw pretty consistently as far as thematically. Of the following community organizations are you aware of? Uh, the Chamber of Commerce Habitat and Scotland County Parks and Rec were pretty much even across the board as far as awareness goes. The least, um, awareness, as far as community organization goes, was for the Tourism Development Authority, which I thought was interesting because typically the tourism development authority is a little bit more exposed and trying to attract people. So I thought that was pretty interesting that they're, that they were the least, um, kind of out there, or people weren't really aware of them. Which of the following events are you most likely to attend? The John Blue Festival was the highest ranked one, not quite sure why, I've never been. Um, and then it was the Chamber of Commerce after five concert series and then Spring Fest and then a few others. Which of the following parks are you most likely to visit? The James Morgan Complex was the highest ranked one. Um, alright, so these are the common themes that I pulled out from the survey responses and we'll use these themes to develop our SWOT analysis and our goals and action steps. But for the first name, and these aren't really in any particular order, but I just kind of started out in order where the, uh, concerns regarding crime rate, demand for restaurants and entertainment, a lot of the comments said, people said, I want a Texas Roadhouse, I want, uh, I think one was like a Denny's or an IHOP or something. People were very specific, so I just said restaurants and entertainment. Um, tax rate is a popular concern, demand for enhanced youth opportunity, demand for improved educational quality, support for increased industrial development and concerns regarding litter, littering and visual appeal. So as far as translating these survey results into goals that the planning board could potentially oversee or delegate even, um, this is just an example of what we'll do in our next meeting, but we'll take the percentage of respondents in one area and then we'll try to translate that into goals. So where people saw an issue or weakness, we'll see that as an area of opportunity. Um, so expand the county's awareness of the housing and recreational options currently available and ensure that residents have opportunities for homeownership. That's a very general goal, but thinking of like working with USDA to do, um, homeownership classes and working with local, um, agencies to meet with families to kind of do outreach for loans and finances, that kind of thing. And also crime as well. Um, and then potential action steps, I'm saying on the line, sorry, potential action steps. Capacity for growth, um, is, I just said it again, capacity for growth is the first category. So increased training opportunities for county commissioners, planning board and administrative staff. I know you all reference that being something you're interested in as a planning board to have more training opportunities. And that's a really great, um, idea for you all to list on your goals so that you can kind of have that documented and then later on actually pursue that training. Strengthen partnerships between Scotland County Economic Development and local educational institutions and local businesses. Pedestrian oriented planning, enhanced public transit, which is the SCATS and integrated land use. And it cut off because I didn't download it. I think that says, I can't remember what I put there, but it says it on the, the actual, um, PowerPoint version. And then in the development category, expand municipal sewer services to existing and potential industrial, commercial and housing sites. Identify infrastructure assets and transportation corridors where investment is needed that will support future growth and development. Maintain all existing land use ordinances related to emerging technologies and energy sources such as solar, wind and hydroelectric. I know that the solar, the solar panel ordinance is something that you all were working on before. I don't know if there's an update on that, but it's something really important because without that decommissioning, you all don't really have a legal recourse if the solar panel company decides to leave. Um, so that's a really, a really good thing to have.
It has been presented to commissioners in the past.
Great, okay, awesome. Um, and then assess quality and capacity of existing community spaces. So anytime we're doing an assessment of community spaces or housing options or parks and recreation, it's going to be an inventory assessment and those are really good things to include in our goals because with these inventory assessments, we can have a baseline of where facilities are at, the age of the facilities, the quality of the facilities and any needs that those facility have, facilities have. So as the planning board, a part of this comprehensive planning process, it's us saying, okay, we know that these parks need some work. As the planning board, can we engage with parks and recreation to kind of start prioritizing different repairs or upgrades? Can we empower the parks, parks and rec to potentially apply for some grants? Things like that, as the planning board, on, on the goals and action steps, I want for Scotland County, for you all to be able to delegate some of those action steps to different, um, to different areas of the county government or county staff essentially. That way it's not all on you all because you can't do everything. Um, establish a clear set of priorities to inform event and programming options. So Scotland County essentially having a brand, um, something that you all can use to market yourself. Values, priorities for the county, um, this will help when you're looking to market yourself to new businesses and industry coming into the county. What do we value? And based on the survey results, the, at least from individuals who answered the survey, the rural character of the county is something that's very much valued here. So how can we kind of highlight Scotland County's being friendly for farmers and agriculture, but also industry? And actually big box retailers on like commercial activities or, um, industries that people were interested in were the least scored. So people weren't really interested in seeing like Walmarts and big box retailers, which I was surprised because typically that's a higher, um, chosen thing, selective thing. Address employment, housing concerns to related events, including job fairs, and I think that should have. Workshops and cut it off again. And then in the parks and recreation space, ensure that the zoning ordinance includes provisions for open space and green space. Um, inventory existing recreational facilities, again, the inventory assessment, quality and capacity. Designate standards for open space that are, I should say, county's policies. Designate responsible parties for carrying out recreational objectives. Coordinate with economic development agencies to promote reuse of abandoned commercial and industrial sites and also explore funding opportunities for brownfield site cleanup. So I know that you all do have a few brownfield sites here in Scotland County. So, um, another goal or action step that the planning board could have is to look into those brown sites and see if there's any potential opportunities based on whether they're situated near main roads and corridors and things like that. Engage the public utilities and LR COG to assess and update the availability of water supply and wastewater capacity. I know in our last meeting, water, the water system capacity was a concern that you had referenced or, um, and something that wasn't really talked about by individuals who answered the survey. Uh, so that would be something that you all could look into doing is an, uh, assessment of the water and sewer system here and just to kind of see the quality and how well it's operating. And also the capacity of the water and sewer system to withstand any growth or development. Uh, let's see here, in the culture section, collaborate with local organizations to develop and market a series of workshops on crime prevention specifically. And then conduct, conduct a housing inventory to determine whether gaps exist in specific housing types and assess overall housing condition and pinpoint service needs within the community. So, um, are, do we have any privately owned homes that are abandoned? Do we have homeowners who haven't paid their taxes in years and the house is kind of just, there's trees growing all in it? Uh, what can we do about these sites? How can we prioritize them? So as far as the next steps go, we'll work together in our next meeting in June to develop the SWOT analysis where we'll address and highlight strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats for Scotland County. You all can use the survey responses, which I emailed to Brooke, but I'll email. I actually can download the whole, all of the data, it's a lot, so I don't know if you want to go through that, but it's, it'll be in a Excel spreadsheet. Um, so you all can use that to kind of start getting an idea of what strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats you think exists for the county. Um, and then I, I don't really know for the planning board if the tax rate being high is something you all see as a threat, but it is something that the respondents saw as a threat or something that they saw that's hurting the county. So just something to think about. And then we'll also develop the goals and action steps. The key point of the goals and action steps component is establishing or delegating those action steps to different groups. So I'm not very. So I'm not very familiar with all of the different groups of Scotland County, like the Parks and Recreation, or whether you all have any other councils with boards like the Tourism Development Authority. But how, Chamber of Commerce, what goals and action steps can we delegate to these parties so that the planning board isn't kind of, you know, having to be accountable to all of these things? And typically, part of the goals and action steps is also assigning deadlines or timeframes. So by 2026, we want to have accomplished this. By 2028, we want to have accomplished this. And these are all things we'll talk about in our next meeting more specifically, but if you just want to start thinking about that based on these survey responses. So any questions or comments or feedback?
Brownfield sites, I'm assuming that's a site of.
Not all of them, I believe brown, well, they are typically, but also just open areas where there's no development. So how can those be, how can those be assessed and repurposed essentially? Whether that's an industry that's interested in coming in to utilize that space? How can we assess that land to make sure that it's no longer toxic or there's not waste on it anymore to repurpose it later on? And I think I counted four or five brownfield sites.
Ray's gone, he's still there.
And that's the EPA got with, so.
And will we be getting this information?
Yes, I can send it to you all.
Okay.
The presentation, and I'll also send the Excel spreadsheet as well, so you can like actually go through all the data specifically. So that's all I have. I did just want to ask you about the tax rate because that was a pretty, pretty considerable concern for a lot of people. So with the tax rate, I know we talked about that being in part due to like the education, the budget at least for education. So is that something, when we go to establish our goals and our action steps, is that something that you all see as a threat to the county? Or how do you think that could be addressed? Because we talked about the school floor tax.
Yeah. You plan on hanging, meeting here? Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of odd that, well, we were the council government some years ago, reclassified in general Scotland County as a, rather than agricultural and industrial, as tourism and retirement county. And it's kind of strange that with a tax rate like this, we'd still have tourists and retirement people coming in. But I think a lot of that is with special village. There's, that's, that's a big draw, but that's also a draw for people that have resources, financial resources. It ain't cheap.
Okay. And so I also read about game lands, there being a significant number of acres of game land, and that's why, that's something people attributed the tax rate to as well. So as far as zoning goes, what, how is that, who did, what agency do you work with on that game land?
North Carolina Wildlife? I don't know that there's anything that we can do with that.
Okay, all right. I just, I wanted to understand because I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, it's, it's under the control, if I'm not mistaken, of North Carolina Wildlife Commission.
Okay.
Camp McCall was another huge swath of land.
Oh, yeah, Camp McCall is here.
That's a bigger problem than wildlife, but we don't get any taxes off of either of those.
Right, okay. That makes a lot more sense. I read that and I just wanted to clarify.
On the flip side, you don't have a lot of services to provide there.
Right, because I just, yeah, that makes sense as well.
A little bit surprised there was not more mentioned in there about infrastructure.
I was surprised about that too, yeah. I don't think people really think about that deeply. I think that's.
All they really had to do is run it right across the border to McCall, and see the roads down there, and then come back up here, and they're happy.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, a lot more to imagine, sort of water development, nobody thinks about that.
Right, exactly. So, and I think as the planning board, that's something that, you know, you all can draw attention to and that you all can address in this comprehensive plan. This is the place to do it. So the reason why we do the survey is because the statute requires us to engage the public throughout this process, so we've met that requirement. And now we can take this general, the generalized information, and we can apply it more specifically to the things that the planning board does. And this is a learning process for me as well because I've not been in this field for long, but it's something I'm really interested in engaging with you all on because I think Scotland County does have a lot of potential, and I would like to really get down to some specific goals and action steps that you all think would really help the county flourish. So I don't really know what those look like, but I'm going to do some more research and take these survey responses and see how that might translate.
Yeah, I personally look at Scotland County as being, we could go one way or the other depending on one major decision. And we could all of a sudden start going where we are, who knows?
Yeah. And then I know we talked about public safety, and I wanted to see, I don't know if you're aware of any grant opportunities or anything that's become available for the police or fire department, but that would be something else that we could reference in the goals and action steps because Department of Justice, there's a few other agencies that have grants. And I don't know, does Scotland County have a grant writer on staff?
Nope.
Okay, so that might be something the planning board could also assign as a goal and action step. We want to hire a grant writer by this date because grants are a really critical asset. Grant writers and grants are a really critical asset to counties, so. And the planning board shouldn't have to be responsible for all of that, although most times, planning boards do have to engage and administrators do have to engage in some capacity, so it's something interesting to look at. Do you have any thoughts on that? No, okay.
I think individual departments may, make grant applications.
Okay.
Parks and Rec does some, other departments, but we don't have an official grant writer.
Okay.
The county commissioners did make one step about a year and a half ago, I think, when Sheriff requested a, Ralph Kersey did a presentation and noted to the county commissioners how many people that were training here, that got through a training regimen and left and went to another county because they could start $10,000 or $15,000 more.
Wow.
And they did, he asked for, I think, 25%, he got like 12% pay raise from the county for all of his staff.
Wow.
But they're still, they're, they're not at the same level as surrounding counties, but it's better.
Yeah, there is a disparity, at least from what I saw in the proposed budget, a disparity in that funding, and I'm not really sure kind of what that would look like as, as far as how the planning board could impact that. But I do know something we have to reference in the comprehensive plan is that the citizens noted crime and the lack of public safety as a really critical issue. So I don't, if you all want to think more about how we could translate that, there are zoning regulations that you can use to kind of impact crime. We'll talk more about that in our next meeting because I, I need to do some more reading about that. I don't know if that's something that we could really apply to Scotland County because usually it's mostly applied to like bigger cities, more metropolitan areas, so. But that was a really critical issue for the community. But the good news is we've completed the survey. You all were able to engage a lot of people, 217. We got it out all across the county. I put posters up, so we were able, thanks to Brooke, to reach a lot of people. She was working hard to make sure that she got hers. She was like, Randy, I just got a few more, and I'm like, thank you.
I was hustling.
Yeah, she was hustling. So I really thank you all for your engagement on this, and like I said, this is a good number. And if you all want to reissue the survey, that's an option that we have. But I think this is a good number to move forward with, and I think that in our next meeting, we'll get down to brass tacks and we'll talk more specifically about how this translates into actual goals and action steps, and then delegating those goals and action steps out. So that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
I'll see you then. Thank you.
And we'll come up with questions.
So do you need anything from us or anything we need to do?
Just the date and time for the next meeting? Yeah. And for that meeting, I, I'll need to just talk with you a little bit more about who we could delegate these things out to. So I'll come with some ideas for you all, and then we'll just kind of work on those ideas because I've only ever done this at the town level where it's like population two or 3,000. I've not done this to scale for 34,000 people. So I think that it would be really beneficial to kind of engage with you all about what groups we think that we could assign or delegate these action steps to, or if you have any ideas for goals that you have for Scotland County. And if you want, you can go literally Google any comprehensive plan. I know you've done that before, so Google comprehensive plans and kind of read through examples of what they have, and then get a better idea of what you think might apply in Scotland County.
June 19th is our next regular meeting.
Perfect, I'll be there.
We're going to be closed here that day.
So we need to discuss an alternate date?
Right. We're closed for Juneteenth.
Okay. That is Juneteenth, okay. I'm, I'm easy with dates. Those that have other commitments, I'll kind of let you guys make a suggestion. If you want to do it on, you, you close just that day or what?
Just that day, but the, the 20th, which is the third, Thursday, that's my point of adjustment meeting date.
And I've got session meeting at Trump's that night.
So it could be that Tuesday, the 18th, or whatever, decide, or you do it on another week, it doesn't matter.
I can make it. 18th is good to leave. Everybody else? 18th?
Shouldn't be up to you.
I'll have to list that as a special meeting because it's not our normal meeting time.
Were you motioning on that? Yep. We, we do need to make a motion. I made the motion that in lieu of Juneteenth, that we have our regular, we change our June meeting from the 19th to have a special meeting on the 18th. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, please. Okay, June the 18th, sometime in here. Yeah, same time.
Yes.
Anybody good with that?
Well, it'll be a special meeting if y'all want to change the time. It'll be, you can do that without. Do you want to leave it the same time or do you want to change the time?
Same time so we don't get confused.
Okay. That's a good point. All right, thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Randy.
Now, this that you just emailed me, do I share it?
I'm, I'm gonna, I want to fix one thing on it and then I need to re-download it because for some reason the format had got messed up, so I'm going to figure out why.
Just whenever you're ready for me to share it.
I have a meeting now, so I'll just send it to the group. Thank you, I appreciate it. Have a good evening. Be safe on your way home, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. The other three items, these are things that came to my mind with the situation, the development of the Carson Family Cemetery issue. We have come up with a problem before with people proceeding with something before they get the approval from county to do it. And at one of our, the meetings where the, what is that, housing? No, the.
Mobile loan.
Rehousing thing at Elmore, whatever it's called.
Clayton.
Yeah. J.T. Alford was fairly incensed that there were no hard line penalties in any of our state county regulations that people that purposely and willfully ignore ordinances can be penalized with. Ed has said that if we make a submittal to the commissioners for a specific penalty, that there are certain things that we can't call them, and can you explain that? What fines after the?
Well, there's no prohibition about calling it a fine and forfeiture, but fines and forfeiture is got to the schools and not to our general fund. So typically, we use the work penalty, civil penalty, whatever. There's also, and you and I discussed this, the legislature within the last couple of years has prohibited the use of procedures for, and any sort of criminal fines for enforcement of zoning and development regulations. So we would have to look at civil penalties and maybe abatement actions and that sort of thing, but I think you're really talking more about the money.
Yeah, in, in my opinion, money tends to speak louder than anything else to kind of preclude people ignoring the law. But I, yeah, I know the county commissioners want to have something in place, and I think what we need to do as a board is present them something that will push them to develop and accept a hard line whatever. And I don't know how you term it, but right now, the state statutes authorize the county commissioners to penalize people that ignore ordinances, but that's as far as it goes. It allows the county commissioners to create whatever penalties is recommended and they approve. So what?
They don't set a specific amount, it's $50 a day. Each day is a separate violation, but they do have the authority to impose a higher amount, and you can't, it may be that they want to do an up to amount and leave some discretion to some entity or official to plug in what the accurate amount be. You may not want to penalize somebody who is negligent in doing something, the same way as you would somebody who is willful.
Right.
Done the same thing, so.
So that, that was something to try to prohibit people from doing what the circumstances just happened to be this time. Of course, in that situation, they did get with the county and made arrangements to do what they did. But the second thing, I spoke with one of the funeral homes, and they were not aware that Scotland County had a family cemetery ordinance.
Yes, they were.
They were? You took it every funeral?
I hand delivered on September the 12th, 2022, every single funeral home in this county.
Okay, so I was, I was misled.
Everybody, I didn't just drop it off with somebody.
I was misled.
Well, and the lady that was here tonight is one of the ladies I spoke with. Everybody knew, I had just come off maternity leave, and one of our, the other zoning officials had, had a family burial while I was on maternity leave. So when I got back, Donnie and Thomas had put together a packet, the same packet that everybody gets, and I just went as a courtesy from us to say, you know, if you have anybody in family planning, give this to them because there is a, a lengthy timeframe, and before it happens, let them know this is the requirements and this is what they'll be facing so they can make plans ahead of time. I sat down with every funeral home in Scotland County.
I think you can avoid any issue about whether somebody got notified or didn't remember or whatever.
It's always online, our ordinance.
Yeah, but they, yeah, this particular person said they talked to another funeral home and that they knew what the state law was, and that's all they thought they needed to do about it. And this was a representative, actually, the last name was the same as the funeral home.
I, I think the, I think you suggested in here that the commissioners.
Yeah.
Authorize the number two, and I suspect they would be happy to do that. But there are no.
Okay.
We, we, we have that in our budget and we could cover that. Well, that way you don't get into, you know, well, I, I wasn't there when Ms. Brooke brought it up.
That's right. So you have enough discretionary funds that you could cover that?
Yeah.
All right. And the third thing, and then I want to get, do I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to get back around to asking questions in just a second. questions in just a second. The third thing, because of what happened this time, we need to have something in place that in a type of crisis circumstance like this, that the zoning office, the inspections and zoning office has the ability to not bypass, but.
Streamline the process.
Streamline the process or delay the approval with county commissioners. I don't know how you do it, but we've got ordinances in place. We need some way to be able to allow people in this situation to, I hate to say bypass, to delay approval, but still have authorization to have their burial as they need to.
My only concern about doing it that way is that if you don't give a final approval before the burial, how do you reverse it later? Because.
Well, what if the burial don't legally require?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you don't unbury, I don't think anybody wants to. But this is, this is maybe a classic case because I don't think anybody knew David's wishes until he died. And then when he died, he said he wanted to be buried on family property. So many people don't talk about what they want until the end. And how often does this happen? And then you've got family emotions involved and all that. And we've got to figure out some way to, if the plot meets all of the criteria. And I don't know how you know that, that easily.
I mean, the survey would go out and figure that out, yeah, by doing a survey. But I don't know if county is able to do a preliminary part of that.
Well, what about this special meeting process that only takes forty-eight hours?
But then they still got to get all their ducks in a row and get the survey done and everything, don't they?
Yeah, time constraints.
Well, you might be able to somehow, rather than having a formal, full-blown survey, which, you know, can be, it's in the process, you might be able to, if this board or some committee or whatever.
Could run out of directions.
Would allow that the GIS be usable for that as opposed to a formal survey, if it's possible to do it that way. Or the tax records or tax amounts that are pretty good. You definitely won't have as, possibly won't have as accurate a set of information that way. But, you know, if you're trying to expedite the process, I mean, there are a number of things on an objective checklist that Thomas and Brooke might be able to determine whether they meet. What do you think, John? Can you get a preliminary?
All right, let me make one comment right quick. Coming from Ed, this may be one of those circumstances where we can have like a three-person committee. And we're going to have our discussion here, but the committee can get together and bring a recommendation back to this board at our next meeting on one and three, since number two is not an issue anymore. But. Now, Ed, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But first, my first thought, looking at technical, GIS cannot be counted on. It's not accurate enough that if you got, well, to be honest with you, I need to read through the cemetery orders again. Unless it's a church or a commercial, I'm saying commercial one that's being developed by Hillside being sold and all, their restrictions are more complicated than a family. A family, for the most part, I think you might could take the different information from a site visit. They utilize GIS to an extent to be able to.
But what about the tax map, so they anymore accurate?
It's basically the same thing. Because what was the biggest requirement, twenty feet or something from burial site to the property line, is that right? And that's the biggest thing, that's probably the most important thing you need to think about, is give adequate room between it and the property line.
And there's nothing in the family cemetery.
And a acre gym.
But if you go to the regular cemetery ordinance.
Yeah, but that's more like.
Yeah, it says all plots will be set back a minimum of twenty feet from property line of the cemetery. Twenty-foot easement.
That's for, to me, like a more commercial.
Yeah, that's more commercial. But this is not, one of the discrepancies we have in the Scotland County Cemetery ordinances and the state, the state says a minimum size of thirty contiguous acres for a private or public for purchase type cemetery. And Scotland County says three acres, three contiguous acres. So I don't think that we test them what the state requires, can we?
Is the minimum thirty or less? Or minimum thirty or maximum thirty?
The state says a minimum of thirty contiguous acres. And Scotland County says a minimum of three contiguous acres. Says Scotland County is going less than.
You can't.
I don't think you can do that.
But that's for, that's a purchase? You thought that was a misprint?
I think that might be a misprint from when Jean did that. And that may be one of the text amendments that we need to correct.
But that's for a purchased cemetery, right?
That's for a managed purchase, public or private cemetery. You pay for a lot, they have state mandated records that have to be kept, you've got contingency fines, you're required to keep monies on hand, I mean, there's state regulations, chapter, was it chapter sixty-five of the general statutes, there's a whole chapter on cemeteries.
Well, one of the, one of the components of the process that's going to be the most time consuming, and this is not a reflection on you, John, it's just the survey.
I'll call you back, I'm in a meeting. All right, bye.
I mean, if you're, if there's one thing that's going to be time consuming, that would be it. And it's not, I mean, every survey is going to have plenty to do without something on an emergency basis.
That is something to consider.
So are people waiting to people pass away to say, okay, uh, we want a family cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah, in this case, you didn't know.
The two times just come up, one on the border, that's what happened.
But you gather, you have to know that there are some policies and procedures that you might have to follow and you waiting to the, to the time of.
Nobody thinks about it either. No, I ain't gonna say nobody thinks about it, but.
Yeah, they're not thinking about that.
I mean, because if you, if I got to build a house, if I got to do this, I got to follow policies and procedures. If I got to bury somebody in a public cemetery, there's policies and procedures. So why wouldn't you think you have policies and procedures when you're doing a family cemetery?
Some counties don't. You can go out in the middle of the field and dig a hole and put somebody in a headstone there and it's fine. You go up to Newton Grove, and I can't remember the street number, but I used to work for a company up there during the real estate crisis, I actually worked for them a lot. And driving back and forth to their office up there, the potato field, sweet potato field, there's a single cemetery sitting in the middle of that sweet potato field. It's on about a ten by twenty plot. So there are, look, there, you can look in the state statutes, there's nothing in the state statutes about family cemeteries. That's on a county by county basis. So this is where my suggestion, I think we need to get a three-person committee and maybe get with Thomas and Brooke and sit down and try to iron out some of the ifs, ands, or buts, what the inspection department can do. Because I, this is something we can't resolve here, I don't think. What do y'all think?
Well, I've got a little idea. I don't know, I'm just throwing something out there, maybe this is one they do with committee and not bring it up now. But maybe do a quick preliminary assessment as far as structures, wells, things of that nature, the distance, because that's pretty easily figured out.
Is it close? If it's not even close, then you got a big open field.
Biggest variable in this is how far away from the property line. So maybe they could do a preliminary assessment based on that and say, you know, if you do put this here prior to getting the map done, and it's in violation of twenty foot of the set of the property line, you know, you may have to move them. But if you're clearly, well, you know exactly where your property line is and you give it twenty feet and it meets all other requirements, have that, you know, until the survey and all that can be done.
That's where I was thinking, maybe if we got a committee, we could talk to Thomas and see if he's willing to go out and.
But I don't know.
A hundred-foot tank measure and do some measurements.
But I don't know if it's, should it be up to them to go out there and do that assessment?
Yeah, that's, that's what we got to, you know, figure out the ifs, ands, or buts. Well, you technically, you're the zoning administrator, you.
He is too. He's zoning.
I mean, I don't know if that's something, I'm just saying whether it be, I don't know if that's something the county should do or, or member the zoning board.
Yeah, I would have no problem.
I would, I wouldn't mind doing.
You know, in a time of, in a time of bereavement and grief. I have no problem going out and trying to help people out during that. So.
Daniel doesn't want to go, I can't.
Not.
Well, I mean, we need to come up with a, might miss everybody, maybe think of a solution to this, because this is a tough one, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just think we need a way out.
And I need to get back to number two. Because I'm just, so, so basically we got to create, create a paper trail, even though she's already, they gave it to each funeral home.
Get a certified letter.
And then we wonder why the children won't do what they're supposed to do because adults can't do what they're supposed to do.
Do you think?
Don't get me started, Dan.
I'm just saying, she was given to every funeral home.
Do you think it's due to number two?
I mean, no, no, I mean, if you want, no, if you want to create a paper trail, I'm just saying, I, I'm at a place, you know, if she, if she has taken it to every funeral home, and then, you know, they say, well, we didn't get it. But she's sitting down and talking to somebody in your establishment and gave you this, but then you're saying you didn't get it. I understand, I understand the paper trail because now you can't deny it because it's certified letter and somebody had to sign for it. But you, over here, she's done done this. So now it's like.
It goes back to number one. She's already done it, but there's no fine if you don't do it.
It's like you're holding their hand.
Right.
It's frustrating, but we can't go back and redo that. Yeah, and we need to go ahead and do it again. Well, actually, we can redo it, but make sure it's certified letter. And that way, nobody will have a legitimate excuse.
Without number one, they're still going to do exactly the same thing.
That's why number two's a hood. And that's where I think, if we get, with y'all's permission, and I'll be glad to be on it.
I'll be glad to.
Do you have another volunteer?
Or the committee?
Yeah.
If John's even on.
Yeah.
Okay, he's got all the expertise.
Oh, Dan's got fire over here. We'll use that fire to make some switches for us. I mean, I will.
Tell us when and where.
Will you be able to, just say if they choose you to do their survey, will you be able to make recommendations or will you be able to be a part of that? Conflict of interest.
Oh, because of being on the committee?
Yeah.
Good point.
Well, the committee's not going to have a big binding.
We're just coming up, we're just coming up with the policies. This isn't actually.
Well, yeah, and then we propose to county commissioners. I don't know, that would.
Committee, committee.
Because they could hire somebody else.
The chairman can call a committee, committee works outside of the regular meeting. They bring proposals back to the zoning board.
So once the, the committee decides on something, it comes to the zoning board, then to the commissioners?
We bring recommendations to the zoning board.
Have a public hearing.
Want to change the order?
Yeah, we need orders.
If it's decided, they change it.
Mm-hmm.
I've got an idea already.
Okay. All right. Well, then we have a four-person committee along with Thomas and Brooke.
If you have four, you need to advertise the committee.
You were there. No.
They said three.
Because technically that would be.
Yeah, y'all three, no, y'all three, it's their three.
You got three, you're fine.
Yeah, they got three.
I'll serve or not serve, just.
Do what?
I'll serve or not serve, whatever works.
All right. I, I think we need John.
Yeah, you need the expertise.
I'm like, you know, I don't have to be, I'd like me because I brought these up, but Daniel, you're.
Nah, y'all can do it. Y'all three.
You sure?
I'm positive.
You got the fire?
I still encourage y'all, but y'all, y'all got the expertise, especially.
So we get, we get to make decisions, you get to be something about it. It's like.
He's going to tell us what's wrong with it.
I come in with a mouthpiece and a hell with no laughing at me.
Okay, so we have, the chairman is creating a committee of himself, John McLean and Jim Smith, further investigate items one, two, and three under other business. Do we have any other business tonight?
I thought you just been doing one and three.
Well, one and three, yes, two is done, one and three.
And chairman's going to call the meeting that tells him we're doing this.
Yep. Any other business tonight?
I have a question. When it's time to cut with like the goals for this conference of plan and figuring out who should be in charge of what, where will the? Like I say, for example, I'm just thinking education-wise, if, obviously that's, that was something that was brought up, you know, like the public school system. Well, we know that the Board of Education should be in charge of whatever goal, whatever it is that we set. Who is to ensure that they're, like, these goals or these things are actually being worked on? Like, is that going to be?
That's a good question.
For sure, following it more or less than the procedure, but no.
The, the legislation that was passed, one sixty D, which have you gone through and reviewed any of that? That was what, that was what two and a half years ago, two years ago mandated all of the municipalities and counties to update their ordinances with some minimum requirements through one sixty. Everybody had to have in their ordinances, specific items. And one of the things in one sixty D, they talk about things that can be in a comprehensive land use plan. They talk generally about involvement. They say the community, the zoning board, the county commissioners, county organizations, but there's nothing in there that dictates who's to be in charge. It's supposed to be a group effort. Right now, the group is us and Randy, so.
Do we, do we invite an individual from, let's say, the Board of Education, Parks and Recreation, let's say a zoning board, or these different entities, invite them to be, come to the table to say, okay, what input do you have? And would you be the contact person to say, okay, these are the goals that we're working on, or this is a SWOT analysis that we're putting together? Would you take this back to your organization and say, hey, this is what we think is going to go in the comprehensive plan, this is what we want to see happen, and this is when we would like to see it happen?
I think so, but that may be something more that we want to talk to Randy about at the next meeting. Because I kind of got a feeling that that may be some of what she's going to get into. But.
If you're going to succeed, that's probably the way to happen.
Right.
Because there's no way you force anybody to take your recommendations.
Another body to make your recommendation.
And they know better than we're going to know anyway. And they may already have a plan that they want, but they just don't have the support to get done. That may be where we can help. I mean, what, whatever, they already have a vision and plan of what needs to be done.
Yeah, like the, like the, I mean, like the Board of Education, they just put out their North Carolina test scores, their chicken, and they have. and they have, they're coming out of, Scotland County is coming out of, um, failure, so their scores are increasing, and they're climbing steadily, so their scores are starting to increase.
That's good.
Yeah. So, you know.
That's good, but I, I'd say, I think that, um,
To, to maybe further answer your question a little bit, I think that once we get to working with Randy, and we decide us, our recommendations, then we take them to the county commissioners, and at that time, we can say, these are the groups that we think that should be involved, and at that point, I think really, it's gonna be more up to them to push things to get done. I don't think it's up to the zoning board, we're, we're doing the grunt work, and the county commissioners need to-
I just want to know, like, how, how are we gonna know that these goals are actually being worked on? Like, how, how are we gonna know that we're just not doing this, just to say it's done, and-
She might be able to clarify that some, then again, maybe the board needs to check in every six months a year, where everybody at on it, you know? Because a lot of it, I think, would have to be up to-
Oh, you're talking about the long-term goals, 26, 28, 30?
Yeah, like, how do we know that we're, we're on board to meeting those goals?
Well, that, that's-
How we know that, like?
That's county commissioners and county manager. They're the authority, we're admit, we're advisors, don't they? So once we present it to the county commissioners, we're done with it.
Yeah, so much of this tonight, you can look up there and say, gosh, they need to be involved, and they need to be involved, and they need to be involved. Are they even aware that we're doing this? Different groups.
We create the headaches and hand it over to somebody else. Anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, well, it's not a vote.